The motor vehicle and road traffic are very expensive. The road side is parking, the road side is not parking. And in addition, the system allows you to take photographs. So when you click PCY123 and take a photograph, both of the vehicles are on the picture. So you have automatic photographic evidence. So should you be challenged, it's easy to defend or something like that. I mean, just come up here on Harre Street. Clear, go back with signs, just like the vehicles just park on the side. And it causes other issues with traffic flow and causes problems. When a city is not flowing right, business is not right, and when it is restricted, you restrict business, the city becomes unfriendly to those who want to come into the city. This is something that enforces one thing that one of our national watchwords shall enforce, what is good. This is my advice. I told you this.
Mr. Hunt, for all the technology, you said some GBS, or somebody doesn't know, or is it money or is it a move?
Oh, we have a key. There's a key. There's a money bypass that will completely pressure release, or release is upshifted. But when, once that is activated, you truly can expect that. So like, for example, if you have, you know this one, that money situation, that call you like, right? Somebody knows the operation, so rush, imagine, please, rush, you know how we are, right? You guys say, okay, okay. And the backend, which was, excuse me, we saw our deployment, but we saw money release, but we didn't see your company filing for the release. So that's a level of transparency that is there. And it's not like, oh, that would be bad.
Mr. Hunt, I have one question. You talked about persisting with your credit card. Not everybody should ask for a credit card, so if you're...
Yes, yes. Well, the other thing is that the deployment teams, what we are engaged in with this is a cashless system. With cash, you know, there are obvious pitfalls. We all do, we're shaking our head in this issue. If we don't have a credit card, we are advocated a link card. Now, CPAP, you are, everybody has a link card. So we have a very deep penetration with link cards. So we just have the wireless machines, the teams. There's a phone three number that you can call, a team member, who is located, because they can locate the numbers, they just walk home, and the closest people, where you just before, you have to set up a vehicle, you just swipe their card, and it is. In rare instance where you have someone who do not have a link card or a credit card, we will put a cash system in place. There are several ways you can do it. Behind the document, network, or the network which is to pay bills, you can use those. There is also through an ATM which is a credit. They purchase credit through the ATM system, the pay towards the ticket. But it can be done, or you can simply, because, for example, if we run a test on the system and we deployed in a few streets in close vicinity of city hall, we have city hall as a capture.
That is what's very accessible. Is this a sort of national security, like, for example?
What, national security? We don't know many approvals that is needed from national security, but you can check with that. I mean, this is not, in any way, in, all it is really is enforcing violation of parking which exists on the law. Now, when you look at the municipal corporation act, the bylaws, you just get... Section 134 gives the municipality the ability to make rules for all road infrastructure. And it also goes as far as giving the ability to decide on what methodology you're going to use. In other words, if you want to hire a private entity to do it, you can do it. So if you go to section 134, clause, paragraphs A, B, and C, D, it tells you, it also gives you clause two. It tells you, "There may be imposed in respect of any breach of any such bylaw, a penalty not exceeding $1,000." It gives you ability to go up to $1,000. So, I mean, that is, that may be a political decision as to where you want to place the fine. But I guess legal counsel to the municipality will have to advise on that. But this is a very simple system. It can be, this can be deployed in a week. It's just a matter of acquiring the units, entering it in, and deploying it. It does not take any infrastructure. It may need some administrative accommodation. As far as the municipality, you all doing what you all need to do to put it in place, and it's easily, it is easily expandable as well. You can ramp up, you could start a test with 10 to 20 units, and that can easily ramp up as the demand is there. But it's a great tool for parking discipline.
Mr. Hunt, Mr. Hunt, I just wanted...
Yeah, there's only a cost, a cost to the cities incurred when you violate the fees. When they pay the fine, it is just a sharing of the revenue. So there's no upfront cost to the municipality.
Yeah, I could, I could see the thinking behind it, is that people have less claims for damages, which I guess is really what it should be. And it was introduced too, because it's a faster way of doing things, faster and safer way.
Yes.
But it's new. It hasn't introduced, is it introduced anywhere else?
Yes, no, it's like, I speak to that.
That's correct. Company, the company that created the Barnacle has only been around, has only been around for a year and a half, so it's brand new. But it's already, it's already been deployed in several large cities in the United States.
It's brand new.
This is the first corporation that came to make this presentation?
To make the presentation, yes.
Sure, yes.
The first corporation that we've engaged. However, I mean, we are, we are promoting our solution to our problem, and the corporation in municipality takes a step to move first. We're ready, we're ready for the program. And you probably, because we have to tell us what it's been, what it's been, because it has come here, so we can do this, we can do this.
So I guess you could, you could still be first.
Two quick questions. What is the...
Share in closer issue.
Yeah, what is share and go, is that for negotiation? To maintain this, we should have a... Okay. It's 500, we are looking directly to this, this is the corporation. But I have to wonder, you are smart, you will build a fast, because you have to maintain and have our infrastructure, you will let it, so you will, with this system, you don't have anything, nothing, you know, nothing, it's just, it's just money comes in, revenue now money coming in.
Mr. Hunt, another thing, I'm more or less being devil's advocate here. If I violate the law and come and find one of this on my windscreen, swipe my credit card as a case maybe, pay for it, you're going to find that in the bushel. I am not going to bring back that for you all, according to what I saw on the video.
Right.
And you'll, and you'll be faced with a lot of vandalism as well. And then you can't prove that it's me, because I will tell you, I just took it off and rested at the side of the road. Because according to the video, they say you have, I think, 48 hours to return it, or 24 hours to return it. Trinidad, they are not going to return that after they paid their $500. That going to be found in some bush that CPAP forgot to cut.
Where?
And it's going to be broken as well, so it's going to incur a lot of cost to replace them.
But the good thing, the good thing itself releases that you pay a deposit, you pay a deposit, and I mentioned that, but we said, you pay a deposit, so that the deposit is only returned back to you when it's checked, market is...
They're not going to look for no deposit, how much will the deposit be? So you're paying for, so there is $1,100?
If you want self-rease, but if you want the attendant to come and release you, which is a very fast process, it's poly number, somebody here will come and you...
Right. The, the, the remote release is, is a convenience, right? You have a meeting, you, you want to do it. If you don't want, of course, we're going to ask for a deposit, because as the gentleman said, if we don't ask for a deposit, the, it will be left on the side of the road. No one's going to return it. So you have to get, you have to do a deposit. But if you do not, if you have time to wait, somebody will come by and release it for you, just like a clam. So it's, again, it's options, you have options.
What we could possibly do, because I mean, your time is running short, we could just clamp the desk. If the desk does not, and it's not for us, we can clamp the desk. So you all can come in, come close, I'll take a look, right? So we will, yes, so we'll demonstrate to you with the app, how it works, right?
Okay.
Yeah, problem, that's, hold on, we'll deploy, the city app, the city app there, right? This is unit number 1137, it's ready.
Yep.
Okay, so we deploy, allow, okay. So vehicle license, we just put test. Activation code which just comes off of the...
Don't put 500, because they'll take it out of my credit card.
Okay, one. Violation type, there's a menu, so you can just, you will have to put what it is, no permit, no parking, no parking zone, resident hall, park on landscape. All right, so say handicap violation, which there's a lot of that in Trinidad, but then we go next. It gives a manager code, this is a code pops up there, manager code.
Right.
So 1711, and you will hear pump code here. So you have pump code here, right? It's option. So it's, it's got any option. Watch, now watch, it says photo library, right?
All right, who wants to try and break the table?
Yesterday, we, we had trounced the police into me. So we are, deploy.
Hot boy, hot shit, yeah. Same here, all right.
Did I die?
It's okay, that's...
It's not broken.
It's not broken, it's not broken. Yeah, go ahead.
Go try and, you have to pay for it.
All right. That's what's going to happen when people try and pull it, pull it off.
Are you going to be on the list, talking about the windscreen?
All right. So any, any motion, and if you drive away, the alarm is going to be blaring as you drive away, so your head's going, your head picking out the window, the alarm blaring, and you are, I guess, driving. Hopefully, you don't kill anyone.
Now, watch, you see, it's deployed, right? 1137, and if you look here, you see...
You want, you want to do the car?
Yeah, so we can just demonstrate it, like, if you call it. We're going to have a phone in a local line, once deployed, so, all right? Yeah, we will, we will do all of it, so we're going to call.
Hello, you have reached the Barnacle release line for tow pros. You can enter the device number and quickly remove it by paying over the phone. The device number is a five-digit number printed on the device itself. Enter it now.
So we enter the device number.
To locate the number, press a zero. If you need assistance, find... We show you need to pay...
One.
Dollars to remove the barnacle.
So we enter a dollar, so it...
Please enter your credit card number now to release the barnacle. For more options, press a zero.
Okay, the phone...
This device is attached to a vehicle with the license plate.
Oh, yeah.
P20, F23. Or handicap violation. If you would like to release the barnacle now with a credit card, please hold the line. If you would like to dispute this charge, please note that agents are only available Monday through Friday, 9:00 AM to 5:00 PM, and that you may pay over the phone now and release the device and dispute at a later time. But to dispute, please hang up and dial area code 303-829-8844. If you wish to pay with cash, please hang up and dial 303-548-7624. Please enter your credit card number now to release the barnacle. For more options, press a zero.
477, 20, 23, 33, 63, 52, 64.
All right, so we just entered the credit card number, so the system will last, will stay.
What's the credit card number?
Enter your credit card's expiration date now in month, month, year, year format. For example, for September... Enter the three-digit security CVV code on the back of your credit card. To confirm and accept these charges, enter your five-digit credit card billing zip code
Right, so it's going to give it a release code now.
Thank you, your payment was approved. Your release code is... If you need to hear the code again, press one now.
It will also send you a text, so you wouldn't lose the code. So you just...
Five minutes, 30 seconds to pull in the text.
All right, so it's...
By gently pulling off the windshield and holding it...
Then you put it in your car, and if you want to own it for 600 TT, you can own it, or you can, you know, we'll have, we would have drop-off boxes strategically placed.
We did have drop-off box, yeah.
If I have to, you have my... Exactly, that's why you...
We could, but we just calling a figure of 600, right? But we, we are just saying it could be, you know, it could be a figure that is prohibitive to take care of a street if it's...
Right, I'm, I'm right.
Very only license company can use for us to enter that.
We have an agree, we have an agreement with ideas that...
As I said, there's no other device like this on the planet. If you go ahead, Google it, and you'll see there's none. This is the old one, the patent is owned by the ideas that stick company. There it is, there's a... It was a group of Wall Street.
I think Wall Street is a marine.
Yeah, one is a marine, one is a, the owners of the technology, one was, is working on Wall Street, and the other part, that's people from Wall Street, that's where they developed this idea, and they started putting it up. But it's, it's quickly getting a lot of...
There's, there's quite a few cities already with that.
Once we, we do something like this, because we're trying to keep Trinidad Baygovery progressive. It's 2018, it's now we want to get some innovation, and this, the good thing about this is stores, and addresses, and national property. What if it's a senior citizen who not into this kind of technology? Senior citizen is to carry their phone? Some of them, some of them say, ah, me too, but they have a keeper, that's what it means is a keeper, you know, this is, there's a number part with a screen, just like a me too. So it's no big touchscreen.
So I, I would say that somebody that's technically challenged, they would call, and they would have an agent go and walk them through it. That would, that would be the simplest, simplest way.
Mr. Hunt, ladies and gentlemen, I want to take this opportunity to thank Mr. Hunt and his colleague for a very, very exciting and interesting presentation. I'm sure the members in this room will be talking about it for days to come, especially when our ESP decided he wanted to try and lift it off the desk. All fun aside, it certainly is informative, and it's a good option for us to consider because we're looking for alternatives. All the points that you outlined make sense in terms of, at a time when we need to cut costs, the high cost of operating the way we are now, as well as with the increased number of vehicles on the road, commercial and otherwise, things have increased, so that parking is a major, major issue. And public responsibility tends to deteriorate when people are pressured or stressed about commercial interests, or even when they have to go, for example, we, we don't have the greatest planning in Trinidad and Tobago, as you know personally, Mr. Hunt, from your own experience in government. We have government offices in places where there's no parking, et cetera, et cetera. Thank you so much for the demonstration. I know that his worship has been in talks with you, and I'm sure through him and the CEO, we will discuss and continue on. Members, do you have anything else you would like to ask these gentlemen before, because I know, I heard you say you had to be in Port of Spain, and mayor may have made you late.
We don't violate anything.
Any other questions, members? Again, then, thank you so much for the...
In conclusion, I want to say, maybe, point, that is, zero investment, we did, for income. In addition to that, we have a step into this whole thing, but this is a thing that is a much larger project of monetizing parking in the park. We also have a system whereby zero investment in technology base and parking monetization, which is...
The wave of the future.
Yes. What to, what to reward in the parking, it's a thing of the park. When that time comes, this is a full day, thank you very much.
Thank you, safe journey.
A proposal, and get back to you, I know, I know that you are going to Port of Spain with this, don't sell it as comprehensively as you did in San Fernando, because we want to be the first. How it's done is normally, what San Fernando do today, the rest will do tomorrow. So we want to stay with that.
But still, you know, I was...
We had the same teacher, he said, so congratulations and thanks for your presentation, and of course, members will share the views and the thoughts, and, and congratulations on all the best with your, with your efforts this evening. But do not give them all the perks and, and the benefits, all right? Thank you again, sir.
Thank you.
All right. And, and, and members, while, while the media is still here, while the media is still here, and while the media is still here, not leaving us yet, we may have to deliberate on, on the information that is outside there. If it is that, that they shouldn't, this is a consideration, it's not a decision that was made, and I don't, I don't know how we want to treat with it, because we want, we could say, treat out there as a, as a precursor, or as a sensitizer, as a feedback, that we want to introduce this, to start putting the public aware of it. I don't know what you all thought, sir. If you all, if you all think it's a good idea, I mean, don't just make a decision now, but I want to know your views, do we, do we allow the media to, because, you see what we're doing there? One reporter, old cameraman going behind, never ready, so, so it means that, that, I didn't see when they came in, but it means that it is there that we are contemplating this, but it may be, it may be good because they're going to Port of Spain this evening, and they started their meeting, so maybe we could be Port of Spained. So the decision is, do we allow this to go out, that we are considering it, and, and as a consideration, or put a cap? What are your thoughts?
Consideration.
For consideration, so we let them, we let them go ahead for consideration.
Also, if you want to put in video, you can take that on this page, and I can put it up for, or we can comment.
Yeah, and for consideration, yeah. Because it really, why, 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 now, now, this is not going to interfere with the, with the wrecker. It's going to augment the service, because sometimes wrecker can't move out because we're too close to each other. It happens by St. Gilbert's regularly. The park forecast, the wrecker can't get inside there, especially in, in close on one-way streets and things like that. So, and it will also augment our revenue, and create some employment. So it has potential, and like us, we could deliberate and give it a balance. Mr. Martin, it will not interfere with your, with your functionaries?
Not at all, sir, because there are some offenses that you need to have the vehicle removed, such as obstruction and so on.
All right.
So the, I mean, it could work in conjunction with the wrecking.
Absolutely.
So it wouldn't interfere with my...
And, and no cost to the corporation. So with these few words, we will bring this meeting to a close, and, and continue with the, with the, with the, started about five minutes, could you ask, have the gland removed, please?
Yes.
When they drop it, someone notice, someone notice, huh? When they drop it, someone notice already, here's three load, huh? When they drop it, let me know, man.
Let's bow our heads and pray. Almighty and eternal supreme being, the light of all lights, decree...
Council, members of administration, thank you very much, acting ESP. Oh, his worship has rejected.
Members, I'm Mr. Martin, emergency, I'll ask the deputy mayor to continue.
As we proceed, as we proceed with the agenda to which we are here today for, I ask... Yeah. We have minutes of the fourteenth statutory meeting held on the 20th of February 2018. Are there any errors or omissions? There being no errors and omissions?
Members of council, members of administration, I was not absent, I was here, but I'm deemed absent.
To be made?
One omission, yeah, correction. Thank you.
Any other errors and omissions? There being no other errors and omissions, I ask someone to move for the confirmation of the minutes.
Madam Deputy Mayor, members of administration, members of council, I move for the confirmation of the minutes of the fourteenth statutory meeting of the tenth San Fernando City Council held on Wednesday 28th of February 2018.
Moved by Pleasantville, seconded by?
Madam Deputy Mayor, members of council, members of administration, Marabella East, so moved.
Seconded by Marabella East. All in favour?
Aye.
Any against? Any abstentions? The ayes have it. Shall we move then to matters arising from the minutes? Page one. Page two. Page three. Page four. Page five. Page six. Page seven. Page eight. Members, we are constrained to some extent by the emergency, the absence of his worship and our CEO due to an emergency that has arisen and has dictated that they both leave the chamber. However, we go now to matters for attention. Are there any announcements?
Madam Deputy Chair, members of council, in the absence, corporate secretary, Monifona, we have to rise to make announcements. One is the death of Mr Surich Mahabir, a young businessman from La Chapelle Street. He died on the 30th of March at the age of 46. He was the owner of Germany Holdings Limited. The other is none other but the father of our nation. The anniversary of his death will be tomorrow, please God. And that is Dr Eric Eustace Williams. He died on the 29th of March 1981. So we rise this morning to pay homage to these two people who has passed on, but in particular, our great father, who has left us with a legacy which we propose to return, which we hope to...
Excuse me, councillor, let's rise for the return of his worship.
My apologies. Deputy, where are we? Okay.
Please rise for a moment of silence in respect for those that have passed.
The souls of the people departed rest in peace and rise in the glory of heaven.
Your worship, members of council, chief executive officer, members of administration, your worship, I would like to offer with your return, if you would like to return to the minutes, if there's anything you would like to raise.
To welcome Mr Timothy Swanson from the American Embassy, who is with us here this morning. Mr Swanson, acknowledge what you've got there. As we continue this good relationship between the American Embassy and the city of San Fernando, I'd also like to recognise, you can sit down, Mr Timothy Swanson, recognise the chairman and members of San Fernando, these executives who visited this morning, as well as representatives from point of A and point of C. It's very good to see you all, members of the cavalry. Committee report, under announcement, council, if you want an annual announcement?
Your worship, members of council, members of administration, please, I would like to thank honourable persons who have answered my call. I have recently got a letter by this one of, that is, 200 kindergarten children. And I sent a request and nobody sent it. I got the COVID public library mobile division. They were there, they are, as Mr Ken said, meeting and... Their age, I also thank them. Please, I love to thank Forest Street Division for the use of their forest box now. Those of you who have never seen it, my kindergarten, they loved it. Then we thank the police, Mountain Ranch. They came with two horses. Of course, I did not want any of them, but the children, they enjoyed it. And parents and teachers and the mayor was asked as well to send... Like myself, I hope that he wasn't afraid. Public health, they are wonderful, the officers they sent, they are truly wonderful, they are children, teaching them simple things. They did a nice video and as well as hand washing and so on. Thank you very much, love of the care. Let me thank our city police. We got the best officers at the school that day. They really engaged the children. They were just getting direct traffic, I believe, but they didn't just do that. They engaged the children, spoke with them at the end of the afternoon. And love of children, telling me they want to meet police right now, they did. I agree with them, for the officers, please, stand up, I said a special thanks. I remember selecting those two officers in particular, I thank you. Let me thank General Repartment for assistance with trucks who want to pick up the children and drop them at their school. Your worship, I left you, I know you also had the American Embassy, two persons from the American Embassy, they were thrilled. I had to tell them, only one of them by his hand, that we moved them from some of the events, when we were at the library. But he just wanted to stay, I was simply, I didn't come here and there. They were really engaging as well, and we thank you for them. And your worship, I left you for last, when I should have put you first. I know that they will be busy and to be quiet for a time. I never told the children, I was glad that you were coming. So when he did show up, the children, some three-year-olds, we say, "Taste the mayor, look the mayor comes." And your worship, I really thank her for you for that day, for the way you have supported and committed your attention. Thank you for this opportunity, it's very amazing, thank you.
Also, we believe you knew that I was coming for that and your timing was impeccable because the American Embassy had to fill up services in the city that they, based on the continued relationship, gathering information of the city operation and to help whatever way they can. And we were going to be sure, it was most convenient, we were looking at a project and we showed that was not started when we were here the last time, especially these areas that are under threat. And it was time that we would put our value on our way to be sure and to look at the, I think it's the agriculture that's going on there. So congratulations, brother, and keep up the good work.
Your worship, Mr CEO, members of council, I move for the acceptance of the finance, planning and allocation of resources committee reports meeting held on the 31st of January 2018, 6th of February 2018, 20th of February 2018, and the 28th of February 2018.
Any other second? Your worship, members of council, members of administration, bringing the paradise, right, so I have. All in favour? Any against the extension of the scari?
Good morning, your worship, members of council, Mr CEO, members of administration, ladies and gentlemen, I will now move to second.
This could be shocking.
President, what do you wish? Members of council, Mr CEO, members of administration, I am a supporter, rise for the adoption of minutes of the meeting physical structure held on 20th or 28th? Thank you.
Council, Mr CEO, members of administration, Marabella East, this is another, rise to second.
Any against the extension, the level full for yours, correct? Any further question?
Your worship, members of council, Mr CEO, members of administration, I will now move to rise for the acceptance of the report of the personal committee held on the 20th of February 2018.
Members of council, members of administration, there's a force rises, to second.
All in favour? Any against the extension of the scari? Committee reports for adoption?
Your worship, members of council, Mr CEO, members of administration, I rise for the acceptance of the time of the 28th of August.
Your worship, Mr CEO, members of council, members of administration, Marabella East, this is second.
All in favour? Any against the extension of the scari? Parks Institution?
Your worship, members of council, Mr CEO, members of administration, I move for the adoption of Parks Institution Committee Meeting held on 20th of February 2018.
All in favour? Any against the extension of the scari?
General purpose is?
Your worship, Mr CEO, members of council, move for the adoption of General Purpose Committee Report Meeting held on 20th of February 2018.
Your worship, members of council, Mr CEO, members of administration, there's a police affair, I say second.
All in favour? Any against the extension of the scari?
Your worship, members of council, Mr CEO, members of administration, I rise for the adoption of the Education Youth Development Committee Report meeting held on 20th of February 2018.
Your worship, Mr CEO, members of council, members of administration, there's a force, second.
All in favour? Any against the extension of the scari? Culture and Arts?
Your worship, members of council, Mr CEO, members of administration, bringing the paradise, rise for the adoption of the Culture and Arts meeting held on 20th of February 2018.
Your worship, members of council, Mr CEO, members of administration, members of the public, hope you survive, I say second.
All in favour? Any against the extension of the scari? Of the claims and liabilities?
Your worship, Mr CEO, members of administration, members of council, there's a force rises for the adoption of the committee report held on 16th of February 2018 of public claims and liabilities.
Good morning, your worship, members of council, Mr CEO, members of administration, ladies and gentlemen, I will now move to second.
All in favour? Any against the extension of the scari? Sports and social services?
Monifona, we rise for the adoption of the report of the Sports and Social Services Committee held, meeting held on the 8th of February 2018.
Your worship, members of council, Mr CEO, members of administration, Marabella East, second.
All in favour? Any against the extension of the scari? Security and disaster?
Your worship, members of council, Mr CEO, members of administration, hope you survive, rise for the adoption of the Security and Disaster Committee Report held on Monday, the 6th of February 2018.
Your worship, Mr CEO, members of council, members of administration, there's a force, I rise to second.
All in favour? Any against the extension of the scari? Children's heritage?
Your worship, members of council, Mr CEO, members of administration, members of public, I will now change standard, rise for the adoption of the committee report of children's heritage of the committee report held on the 6th of February 2018.
Any other second?
Your worship, members of council, Mr CEO, members of administration, Marabella East, I rise to second.
All in favour? Any against the extension of the scari? Assessment?
Your worship, Mr CEO, members of council, members of administration, I rise for the adoption of the assessment committee meeting held on 7th or 27th?
Your worship, members of council, Mr CEO, members of administration, bringing the paradise, rise to second.
All in favour? Any against the scari? Mr CEO, is there any petitions?
Your worship, members of council, members of administration, have you relaxed the emotions, are you emotional, your worship? And you continue, any personal explanations?
No personal explanation from our...
Any questions?
No questions from our...
And you, have a good one, Marcus?
Your worship.
Good one, Marcus, from our...
Your worship, excuse?
Good morning, members of administration, please, your worship, members of public.
You know, this one's difficult, isn't it?
Thank you, your worship. Since the accident, council, that in November 20, has been a long action happening. In 2017, the city of New Zealand, we had a clear campaign. Did any public health members under Dr Maragali?
Did any public department was under Dr. Maragali? And as he represented the area, I will submit some main watercourses that needed to be cleared. To date, a few of those watercourses have not been addressed. And as we are aware, well, if you're not aware, a lot of the water run from Marbella East into Turruba and then it ends in Marbella West. And now that during the dry season, which is ideal for cleaning a lot of these major watercourses. Um, to date, the public health department, they have successfully cleaned the Turruba water course that runs parallel to the Solomon Hoochon Highway, the Turruba water course that runs towards UTT. They have also um scheduled the Nia Avenue Water Course in Cokey. I also have a water course that runs to the Festival River. Another major water course that takes channels of water from the Branara Stadium on that side of the highway, again through my electoral district and ending at Marbella West. Mr. CEO, I understand that you were on vacation, um, you want leave, but a particular time during course of 2017. There is a major water course alongside Union Park West, this runs through Kennet Avenue. I also have open water courses, in particular, one that was listed to be cleaned in West Park. Also, another open water course, two matter fact, one in Pleasantville, one at Massey Street. And I stand here as a representative for the electoral district of Cokey, Turruba. And my question is, when are these issues going to be addressed? Many times we, as the representative, I brought this study, council team up.
So just give me a point, so you can explain to me.
Thank you, your worship.
But in your presentation, you told me that you pressed that you didn't indicate that some of your job was completed, some of your water courses were cleaned, cleaned by the corporation. And to remind you that there was something major water course that was caused by what falls on the people of the ministry of local city trade. And send to your question, answer to your question, I like to say that we, we continually would, we continually would fund this, fund the resources that we have. We have shows like this, which has been stopped from here and there, we saw that function. However, in those resources that we have been utilizing, the minority persons that we have in a program, we're getting what's done. The total of your area, I will ask the council committee, public health department, it comes on the schedule because I know in that area, we also have an order restricted that area. And most recently, we are going to go to the market of West area. So I will get back to you, don't forget this on the schedule, where you have to address the other water courses in your area that falls on the people of the organization that has not been addressed. Thanks, that's very good, so.
Thank you, your worship. For your performance, Mr. CEO, only one of those water courses in the field of ministry works. All other water courses are done with goods in house. So, but I await this schedule and await your proper response of when these water courses will be addressed. Thank you.
Any other council, let me read, it's my responsibility to see the opportunity and be there, see it highlighted. A good opportunity. Good introduction outside there. Nobody else. So, um, CEO, will you address these issues? Any batteries where you can sleep on the schedule for 2017, 2018, 2020?
My honourable members, um, members of council and administration. So in response to the council's question, our department has engaged us, what rightly indicated, in doing those accounting resources provided. In recent times, we did run, uh, the education projects in that company to conduct it in various districts to alleviate the problems funding. We are aware that during the dry season is the most appropriate time to conduct all relevant works. However, we have been challenged with some funding this year and in this meeting, we still want to try our best with what is available. The ministry of works was attacked in by a correspondence in February and they did respond to the CEO indicating that they should have been susceptible to to respond to our request to clean the major water courses. Now, my team is currently out on the districts. Up to this morning, I spoke to my team, I took this and I said about Edwards, who is supervising these works. And we did reach as far as that woman yesterday, and she was in the area supervising and survey. We also did areas in Sogrom Street and we also did some other areas in Marbella East and West. So we are trying our best to deliver the resources at this time to address these areas. So we will continue to provide, CEO, will you read about schedules as we say, we will alongside with city engineers, the department, with the availability of the trucks, the Baku and other small line equipment that we have there. The city engineer and I also did a joint side visit with Mrs. Ram Gatti from the Ministry of Works. And we did look at the areas of concern for both agencies. The challenges that we do encounter in making sure that all the water courses that we from the Turruba area and our quality of the power, we are pressing me, um, as we make reference to the GSC's report yesterday and Mr. Allen, Mr. Philip, um, coming to check, we also highlighted its challenges for getting people started. So the rest we say, council, we hope that we can continue to serve our city and prepare the public in the near future.
And you very, very comprehensive report and it's to be best described as we would in progress. Because as is customary, this time to bring readings and then begin by saying, one of the sponsors, you can take note. Benjamin Franklin was quoted as saying, "By failing to prepare, you're preparing to fail." This saying holds true to this thing and reflected in the litany of policies that have been re-engineered to improve the effectiveness and efficiency of the government of Trinidad and Tobago. At this point, I'm not saying these things because I am in love with the ruling party, but we must give credit where credit is due. And let's begin by complimenting the Prime Minister and his team for the revolution in facts to the poorly structured policy that negatively impacted our economy. At the energy conference held at the High, at the High Regency Hotel last week, we informed that the country will not benefit from a close to world royalty tax of 12.5% on oil, oil and gas produced in Trinidad and Tobago. And another place to put an applause for that. We also like to compliment the, how the major changes being taken by the Minister of Land Transport, Senator Robert Rowan, Sir Leonard. A policy was put in place, uh, to introduce the Baku, the license itself. This should provide a better system of managing drivers to the implementation of a demerit system whereby allowing officers to scan and view the provision. We must also commend the Minister of Planning and Development for embarking on a phase shutdown of two major landfills in conjunction with the modernization of Horace Bar to accommodate the streamlining of waste and waste management. In doing so, it should have a positive effect on the aesthetics of all surroundings as well as, as well as the help and safety for citizens. Finally, under the guidance of the Minister of Local Government, Senator Robert Cousin Guzine, we anticipate the introduction of local government reform. This represents one of the major policy shifts in our system and will have a profoundly positive impact on the role and function of local government bodies of raising our city cooperation, it's no exception. Policy and public policy plays a major role in the proliferation of equity in society. It is often looked down by many as it seemingly is a long and drawn-out process that to some is difficultly directly to action. The process of policies point our ability to objectively look at them and make necessary changes to improve their effectiveness over time. To this end, we must commend the government in their tireless efforts to repair the damage done in the recent wars. The efforts was, has ensured that the negative impacts caused by these decisions has been minimalized. To this, the government did not devalue the dollar or take the decision to interact with the World Bank or International Monetary Fund. And we repeat this, this government did not devalue the dollar or take the decision to interact with the World Bank or International Monetary Fund. Which, which given our, given our current circumstances, is no ordinary feat and deserves our praise. Thankfully, we have a mature, high-skill government under the astute leadership of our Prime Minister, Dr. Robert Keith Christopher Rowan. At this time, I'd like to recognize the historic inauguration of our first-scale president, Spoiler Me Witz on behalf of the people of San Fernando and wish to extend our congratulations on her appointment of this most religious position. She represents one of the major positive changes in our society as she acts as a role model for women and girls in our nation. I would like to take, like to acknowledge the celebration of the Shout the Baptist Liberation Day. After many years of struggling against colonial rule, the Shout the Baptist faith now celebrates 68 years religious freedom. They had a service on the promenade last Saturday, as I told them at that function, 68 years ago, they were running from the police as opposed to having a service next to the police station. Their struggle involved the incarceration of their practitioners who fall before the court, similar to that of the steel man who endured similar persecution. I wish to reiterate the current code to the powers that be to recall the convictions of these spiritual Baptist leaders and spiritual leaders who stood up for their belief to the benefit of future generations. In so doing, we exercise freedom and above all the patience needed to make the change wherever necessary to the benefit of all people. At this point, I want to call on the business owners of San Fernando to organize themselves into a body second, secondly informing the council with a spokesperson as we continue to get mixed leaves as she was authorized to speak on their behalf. And in these matters, we did specifically try to crime the city of San Fernando. And what I'm referring to is a meeting was held last Wednesday with all stakeholders, the Toronto League of Police Service, the municipal police and the business police of San Fernando. Meeting was held last Wednesday at our auditorium. We had 37 business in attendance. Two days after, same person went to another meeting by another arm of the business association that is wasting the police time because the police had to go there and, and more or less repeat the same information that was given at this meeting. Soon this point, I'm asking the business association to get themselves organized so we not have this time wasted at all. In this end, here, I want to thank them with all their patience and for successful meeting. Thank you.
Was it about?
Yes, indeed. On the 9th of June 2017, the US Embassy moved to San Fernando for a day. This involved over 50 embassy officers and staff members representing 15 different offices at the US Embassy. The embassy actually moved in fact to Sapa. We raised this US flag over Sapa that day, that morning, and lowered it again in the evening. On behalf of the US Embassy, I would like to present this flag to the city of San Fernando as a sign of the relationship between the US Embassy and the city of San Fernando. Excellent, thank you. Thank you for having me.
Hello again, this is Tim Swanson. Could you state your full name and your position?
I'm Tim Swanson. I'm the Consulate Chief at the US Embassy in Port of Spain and I am also the Embassy's liaison to the city of San Fernando and Southern Trinidad.
And that is what you're doing inside Fernando today in the city cooperation meeting?
Today, I was presenting the flag that flew over the US Embassy in San Fernando on June 9th, 2017 to the city of San Fernando.
What's significant, significance of our presentation?
It's a significant, it's a sign of the relationship between the embassy and the city of San Fernando. And also commemorates the day that the embassy moved down here.
Will we see any moves that are again in the future?
Uh, and we will probably, uh, move the embassy to San Fernando at some point or another again in the future. We moved it to Arema a few months ago and, uh, we are looking for other opportunities elsewhere in the country for similar things. However, I am down in San Fernando and elsewhere in the south pretty frequently. Generally, at least once a month, sometimes more often. I think this is actually the third time this month I've been in San Fernando. So, uh, after we, we've set up more embassy liaison people with different communities in the country. I think we have four now. I was the first in San Fernando. And so we are going to continue our operations for outreach to different communities in the country that way, with the liaisons.
Uh, Mr. Wayne, could you give us a? Do you give us a comment on the presentation of the flag today?
Well, we're very happy for this presentation. It will be put up in our archives. It's very special. I mean, the American flag will always be the stars and stripes wherever. But with a thank Timothy and the embassy for considering us and for being here, as I said before, it's deeper than that. We now have no ongoing relationship. As you said, we've been down here three or four times a month and we'll continue to do that. The embassy is much more than issuing visas, that they do a lot of social work, as Tim said, outreach programs that we can benefit from. We are visiting some of the challenged communities and seeing what they can bring to table. And they have a lot of energetic team and staff that come down, probably jeans and t-shirts and get in the community and really get down, get into the system, say, "How can we, what can we do?" We visited the Bay Shore area, they're doing some working on our, being assisted with our community centers and getting involved self-help programs, getting the community involved and working, and working together to get some things done, get some things done.
All right, and shifting our focus a little bit. I heard you mention the San Fernando Business Association while you were wrapping up the council meeting. Could you just elaborate on that?
Okay, so what happened? So we had a robbery that was very, I mean, very, I mean, harsh, but it was very frightful. Uh, the TTPS met with me and established an emergency meeting. We had the meeting last Wednesday. We invited our, our municipal police, Toronto League of Police Service, other stakeholders, the general department, and we gathered at the auditorium. We invited Mrs. Bartlett as well, who is a spokesperson on the High Street area. Mrs. Bartlett did not turn up, but the meeting came up successfully. And then two days after, another meeting was held with the same statistics revealed by the police. I mean, as we seen the police night, we seen overtime, we seen the cooperation time, we seen the businessman time, that was held on Saturday evening. Uh, at our first meeting, we decided to reconvene, uh, this evening actually, meeting this evening with some proposals that came forward, some recommendations that were made and we're looking at implementation. So I'm just saying that the business person, whoever they are, they get themselves organized. We can't have two meetings in the same week, discuss the same matter. Let's get organized and let's move forward. If Mrs. Bartlett is the person to represent the people on High Street, then let us know that. Let's not, you had an election and she's the elected person responsible to speak on their behalf and I have no problem with that. As I said, I don't know who Mrs. Bartlett represents. She's a vote person and she has been advocating issues for quite a while and I have no problem with that. However, they have to get organized.
So the first meeting that was held and attended by you all? So, the first meeting that was held and attended by you?
Yeah.
And the second meeting was held by whom?
Okay, we, myself, and the mayor's office, the city council, and the Trinidadian Police Service, so we just tried to call a meeting. The meeting was held last Wednesday, of which we invited Mrs. Bartlett to, did not show. Mrs. Bartlett, they understand, called a meeting three days after, and the police presented the same statistics, the same facts, the same matter that they have in front of them, uh, at the meeting. Now, the police, they don't have time to waste.
And you want to have another meeting this, this afternoon?
Well, we, out of that meeting, several recommendations were made, which went for consideration that we're looking at implementing, and we didn't have the scene.
Could you, did you care to reveal some of these considerations?
I cannot tell you what the police plan to do, that would be sensitizing the public. I am aware of what, what some of these recommendations are, but we need to keep that ourselves.
Okay, and the meeting this afternoon, is it public meeting or private meeting?
Well, you can come to the meeting, I think you should come. I mean, you get an idea where we are, and you will know how to use the discussion.
What time will you meet in this today?
Pardon me?
What time?
6:00 PM at the auditorium, same place we had it last week. And if you go on the mayor's Facebook page, you will see that the meeting took place, you will see what transpired at the meeting, and you see the percentage of persons that attended the meeting.
But do you want to have a good showing for the business community on that day?
We had 37 persons that had a meeting, it's on YouTube, it's there. You go on the mayor's Facebook page, or you go on the S F C C website, you will see it.
On the concerts?
Thank you. You're most welcome.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, then.
All right, thank you. Thanks for having me down here. How are you doing?